This shows the relationships of the house. This is our house. This deck is going to come out from about here. And the solar panels are, will end up at about this height here. So you can see how that's opening up this view corridor. And I'll have a picture from this deck out towards Beaver Creek Bowl. And it's the trees that are blocking this view. It's not going to be the solar system. Now I got a shed roof over, or a break roof. There are so many examples in Wildridge that architects use that type of technique. And it adds visual appeal to it, to our building if we do it right. This is a system that's right near me. I pointed out in the original. I don't particularly like the design of it. But I think that guy has all the right to put it on there. He's totally within code. If it was me, I would have put it on the hill behind his house. But I don't know all the circumstances. He might not have room behind there. He's got other solar panels there. You have solar thermal. But I don't like putting things on... I've been in the solar business longer than anybody. I've probably installed more solar thermal systems than anybody. I don't like making roof penetrations. And roofs, flat roofs or shake roofs, they're just too hard to see. This is coming down the road a different direction. It's very prominent. Mine will not be prominent from the road. This is just another picture, father away, driving. Our road is over here. View the viewpoint. This is behind the house. There's some solar panels there. I have some solar panels on the hill and some solar panels on the roof. I can put them all over. This is up in Wildridge. This, uh, this looks like it's illegal. This looks like it's a ground-mounted solar system that's facing the street, which is illegal according to code. It's not. It's a garage. It's a villary garage. You can go from edge to edge. I've gotten that confirmation from the fire department before I started this project. William Bray's got that confirmation. Dave's got that confirmation. It shouldn't have been in the report. We're just waiting... He wants it in writing. This system's illegal. It goes from edge to edge. It's over a living area. The problem also is with the code, with the fire codes over a living area, you need three feet all around your solar collectors for the fire to be walking. And with a roof of all those gables I have on my roof and all that, you just can't put anything hard up there. And it's really hard to do the penetrations right. This system's another illegal roof. It's too close to the edge. This one's an illegal installation. This is a net zero energy house I built in stock. I can do all sorts of stuff with architecture. This wall, these windows do not go through. I just stuck a window on outside the wall. Make it look good. I can make this thing look as good as you can imagine. So I use techniques like this. I just want you to get comfortable with my design qualities. So I'm not doing it here. This is a two-story entrance. According to your codes, it wouldn't be allowed. This is the interior of that house. This house looks like a multimillion-dollar house. I built this house for about $400,000. This house has cement walls, ICA construction, zero energy use. So there's different building techniques. And that's what I do for developers. I teach them how to build better, greener, more energy efficient, more environmentally friendly. That's the front door. Every ceiling in this house is different. We do stuff even like bopading. That looks like it is an inlet, is stonework. That's all painted. And that's a flat surface. It's just painted when you walk in. Goes in. This looks like it sticks out. It doesn't stick out. So I'm just trying to give you a little ease with how this thing's going to turn out. This will be one of the better-looking solar systems the way it is.
So views are subjective? Let me jump in here. Views are subjective. What you may view as a view corridor may not be what your neighbor views as a view corridor. But regardless, in the town of Avon and in Colorado, views are not protected. And so none of this review that we're going to be doing tonight has anything regarding your view of Beaver Creek Bowl or someone else's view of Beaver Creek Bowl or someone else's view of New York Mountain or anything like that. The only views that are protected are platted view easements. And there are none in this area. So I don't want to, from this body, discuss views. And I don't want view preference to be something that we're arguing or discussing anymore because that's not your review criteria that we have on our table tonight. So, thank you, but we don't need a first-line pen? If not, I have a question for staff. Is the property a platted building envelope? Or is it traditional Wildridge that that is?
It is traditional, except for on the driveway side.
Okay, so it's set backs. It's not a platted, specific building.
It's platted on the driveway side.
Okay, thank you.
And my question for staff regarding lot coverage, building coverage. Assuming your calculation doesn't just take into consideration rebuilding footprint, but there's other criteria that you use for building coverage calculation?
I use the report from when this house was originally constructed. And that's the number that they gave me. And it seems like it was underperved.
But regardless, that number was...
Well, we're then...
Within zoning requirements.
Correct.
Regardless of whether it's staff's number or your number, the lot coverage complies with our zoning requirements. So another moot point.
One of those papers addresses reflectivity by a solar company. There's a non-reflective coating on all panels now. And so, and they solve the reflectivity issue.
So HOA documents are generally agreements between homeowners. The town is not generally a party to those HOA documents. Therefore, it's not our role or responsibility to enforce private covenants for HOA documents.
...presentation. I'll be on my standing on the podium. And I will ask, since we have a heavy load on our agenda tonight, if you will be as thorough but concise as possible providing us with the additional information that was requested from the last meeting. So, floor to yours.
Hi. My name is Judy Douglas. And I am the co-owner of 2011 Beaver Creek Point. This is Tom. Planning staff has acknowledged that our revised plan for the deck with the storage area below mimicked the existing architecture of three homes in Beaver Creek Point PUD. Staff has recommended approval of phases one and two of our solar project. The design of the deck and the storage area has been deemed to be harmonious with the surrounding PUD. Our proposal meets the guideline called out in the Beaver Creek Point HOA documents stating, and I quote, "That all modifications to structures and on land within the project conform to and harmonize with existing surroundings and structures." Our proposal also meets the design, excuse me, the design movie guidelines that the town of Avon enforces for the Wildridge HOA. To enforce this, I'd like to show you what one sees when entering the driveway at Beaver Creek Point. This is the first thing you see. A deck over a garage. And what do you see from the front windows of our house? Two more. This is the first one, a deck over a garage. And this is the second one, a deck over a garage. So what we're proposing is nothing out of the ordinary for the Beaver Creek Point PUD. Opponents contend that we are building within a non-buildable easement and a common area. Let's take a look at the final plat map from 1999. This final plat map, certified by the town on October 25th, 1999, and recorded on November 23rd, 1999, shows all the recorded easements. The map further states the following. Under item number four, and I quote, "The sole purpose of the plat is to subdivide Lot 111, which is the entire five-house subdivision, to create lots 111A through 111E and easements shown here on," and I quote. Item five...
Follow along. You know the packet on page that has number four on it? That's the fourth slide.
Yeah, it's a little easier to leave on your packet than maybe on the screen. Item number five states, and I quote, "The access easement created by this plat is exclusively for the purpose of ingress and egress to and from lots 11A through 11E." The plat map clearly reveals a building envelope approved by Avon for Lot 11C, which is 2011 Beaver Creek Point, and that the easement for the ingress and egress is many feet away from the remaining buildable envelope at the southern end of the existing home on Lot 11C. Unfortunately, staff did not include information in your packet that we provided to them that addresses many of the concerns discussed at the June 5th Planning and Zoning Committee hearing. We provided staff a letter and a map from the county surveyor stating that our building envelope, shown on the plat map, is void of easements and is not a common area. These documents should be included in the record. This letter is in the packet. It's on the screen now. And it's also in the packet that we provided for you today and in slide number five. In the VCP, or the Beaver Creek Point HOA declarations, "common area" is defined as follows in Article 2, under Definitions, Item G. Common area means all the real property and improvements thereon, if any, in which the association owns an interest for the common use and enjoyment of all owners on a non-exclusive basis. Such interests may include without limitations, estates in fee for terms of years or easements. The only common area in the 2001 Beaver Creek Point PUD is the access easement that's created by the plat map that is exclusively, once again, for the purpose of ingress and egress to and from lots 11A through 11E.
Let me point out, this was the map that was divided by the county surveyor. And he highlighted what's seen. So this is the building envelope.
Tom, can you just make sure you're talking on the mic so we can pick it up? Can you please talk into the mic so we can pick it up?
Sure. This was the map that was divided along with that letter from the county surveyor. The yellow section is the building envelope that is approved a long time ago. But there's still 105 feet to the south of that building envelope because that building envelope is 15 feet away from that side yard. And the side yard clearance is a 10. So we could actually, without a variance, build another five feet to the south. The easement that comes in does not go over any part of that building envelope.
Avon staff inquired that we obtain a new expensive title report. This title report is identical to the one that we received when we purchased 2011 Beaver Creek Point in 2015. These title reports did not find any easement on the plat map or in the governing documents that would prevent the full build-out of the building envelope on the final plat map approved by Avon more than 15 years ago. The final approved plat map shows 15 feet between our previously approved building envelope and the southern edge of our lot. Which is what Tom was just explaining. However, the staff report verified side yard setbacks were 10. Thus, we could legally build another five feet towards the south to go to obtain a variance. Unfortunately, staff did not make us aware of this...
Can you speak to the microphone?
I'm sorry. Unfortunately, staff did not make us aware of this when we inquired about simultaneously applying for a variance so that the 21 panels could be installed without the need to cantilever the six panels over the existing house. As you may recall, staff and this Planning and Zoning Committee had concerns about those six panels that cantilevered over the existing house at the June 5th hearing. Building outside the approved building envelope while still maintaining side yard setbacks would address those concerns while also complying with Colorado statute 38-30-168 and Avon's ordinance, Section 7.28.100, Item G. The two laws or the ordinances that we're talking about are on the screen now. The town of Avon's general standard prohibits anything or anyone from connecting the installation of an alternative energy system. This is consistent with the town's long-term goals. The state law specifically prohibits stopping the installation of renewable energy systems or requiring changes that increase the cost of installation or decrease its efficiency. We will submit a letter later in this presentation from an attorney confirming that Avon needs to comply with the state statutes and their own local ordinance. In response to the staff comment regarding a previous requirement to replace trees that were taken out on our property for fire mitigation and to open up views for our neighbors, we agreed to plant three beijingyan shrubs around the proposed deck and storage area. These would be in addition to 90 plants, over 90 plants and 100 bulbs that have already been planted in the area. This should meet staff's concerns regarding landscaping requirements. This PUD will remain one of the most attractive properties of Wildridge. We would like to remind everyone that the plans at this stage are conceptual. The notes on the plans ensure that the architecture and the colors mimic the existing architecture in a PUD and that the deck and the storage area will be constructed within the platted and approved building envelope unless we receive approval for a variance to build outside the building envelope to the east. If we did receive a variance to build four feet more to the east, it is mainly the solar panel overheads that intrude into the existing large 25-foot setback that is actually in our backyard that faces Beaver Creek Point. This four-foot intrusion would not be noticeable to people as it is way above eye height. Now, however, we would like to continue to make the case for the approval of Phase 3 of the project, where the solar array above the deck and storage area. Let's begin by looking at the proposed location of the solar array. Here is an overhead view of the site from Google Earth.
What we'll see in here, because of the way the Beaver Creek Point road travels and because of the existing trees, this solar system will barely be seen from the street. You wouldn't have to make an effort to find the solar system. So if you're driving down the street north, these trees on Mr. Curry's property, plus these trees here, block the solar system and it'd be here facing this direction. And you won't, and you won't see it. Driving from the other direction, I'll point it out in just a second. There's other trees and the house itself that block the view of the solar system. Where we have a movie of this so you can see when we're driving down the road. It's these trees in this house, and the solar system is here. And so it's very, barely seeable from the street. So we're talking about this aesthetics for a system you can't even see. This is a picture from the road, a cell picture. And this would be the end of the house buried back behind these trees. You cannot see that solar system. This would be a view coming the other way. And this tree in the house itself blocked the view of the solar system. This is driving down the road. And as you can see, if we turn here, we cannot see where that solar system is because of these trees that are blocking it. Even as you pass the house, you do not see that solar system. So we're talking about aesthetics, not a system you can't see. Now, as we go farther down this road, off to the right, there is some solar panels on this house that'll be coming up here. And they're very prominent. They're tilted up. And that is a very prominent figure that you can see. And that one's allowed. This is driving from the other direction. Those are the solar systems that are allowed to go in. Very prominent figure that you can see. And here we're driving back onto Beaver Creek Point. And you can see these trees here. And the house itself blocked the view where the solar system will be. Even driving into the driveway, from the side that you think you'd see on, you can't see the solar, wouldn't be able to see the solar system. Or the garage, or, I mean, the storage unit. Or, or the deck because these trees block it. And there's going to be some more trees planted there. This is driving down Saddle Ridge Road. Our house is over to the right, quite a ways. That's the PUD over there. And here are some prominent solar collectors that you obviously can see. And those were allowed. They're all over Wildridge. They're very prominent figures. A solar system is different than a house. It's always going to be a prominent figure. Ours is probably going to be the least visible of the solar systems up there.
So we saw the...
Microphone.
So we saw those tilt-up panels. Staff did not have a concern that the wiring on the underside of the panels would be an eyesore for any of the solar installations where the underside of the panels is exposed. That would be those tilt-ups. And staff should not have any concerns as the wiring can be barely seen and is not an eyesore. The question that you must ask is, are we being treated fairly and judged equally? Or are we being required to do more? At our previous appearance before the Planning and Zoning Committee, we heard several objections that staff had to the solar array. Over the next several weeks, we addressed those objections. They included, the first objection, low head clearance at the south end of the deck. In the response, we changed the pitch of the array and now have seven feet, four inches of headroom in that location. That is much more than what is required by building codes that allow us to have a head clearance of less than two feet. The second objection, the panels being cantilevered over the existing roof.
Mr. Go up to here.
In response, we shortened the array by removing the highest row of six panels so the array no longer cantilevers over the house. This does, however, result in a solar array that produces 40% less energy, which violates state and local renewable energy directives. Third objection, reflectivity of the solar panels. For our original design and application, Rich Koubine, the owner of the local solar company, Active Energies, submitted a letter stating that, quote, "Solar collectors have a non-reflective coating so they should not cause any visual nuisance to these neighbors," unquote. The cut sheets from manufacturers of solar panels state that the collectors have non-reflective coatings. Unlike mirrors that have reflective silver or aluminum oxide coatings, solar panels are black, which is the least reflective of all colors. I doubt that anyone in this room has ever been blinded by reflective light from a solar panel. Since solar panels convert light to energy, there's very little energy left to reflect outward. Measurements from independent researchers have revealed that modern photovoltaic panels reflect less than 2% of the light. This is less reflection than soil, windows, or even wood shingles. If reflectivity was an issue, then all solar panels in Wildridge should be removed.
What I'd like to point out here, this is what the trees remove. When the trees were there, if we even put mirrors up there, the trees would block the reflection. But they just ain't able to reflect.
The fourth objection, that the solar panels extend more than two feet above a pitched roof. The solar panels actually are a roof that provides shade or protection from the sun's cancerous rays, making the deck even more usable. There are several reasons why a traditional roof was not shown on the plans. A, the new bifacial solar panels that increase efficiency because the same solar cells collect reflective light from underneath the panel as well as from the top cannot be used if the traditional roof isn't sold. This limits our ability to consider using this new technology. B, solar panels decrease in efficiency as their temperature rises. So having no roof under them allows for better ventilation and efficiency and also lowers the amount of panel degradation over time. C, the added cost of the unnecessary additional roof materials and the increase of wood materials that could potentially feed a fire. We addressed these issues previously raised by staff. Our original May application was revised and we submitted on Tuesday, 7/23/2018, which is about 30 days ago. We probably should have been before this committee on August 7th, 2018. However, despite the fact that all documents were submitted to address all staff's issues, staff chose not to have the public notice submitted to the paper on Friday, 7/27/2018. Despite repeated requests, we did not receive this new staff report with new objections until last Friday. This gave us one full business day to obtain documents we believe would be helpful to this presentation. However, none... However, none of staff's new objections are insurmountable. And these new objections include, number one, deviations from guidelines suggested in 1999 by the architect on the initial P U D proposal map for the re-subdivision of Lot 11C. These, excuse me, these suggested design-themed general guidelines are conceptual, they're not municipal code. When the homes of the VCP P U D were constructed, many of these general guidelines were not followed. For example, the roofs were supposed to be asphalt shingled. In reality, they are wooden shakes. The exposed chimney it were supposed to be stone. In reality, they're stucco. The cedar fascia were supposed to be painted with semi-transparent stain. In reality, the fascia are number-two Douglas fir, not cedar, and they're painted, simply painted. There were supposed to be three car garages. In reality, only two car garages were built out. This lax feature would have been nice, since most of us have many toys that we use for, to support our outdoor lifestyle. It would have been great to have a lunar storage area for some of those toys. Actually, our storage addition will probably bring us closer into compliance with the 1989 guidelines than the other homes in our P U D.
The guidelines are up here, they're guidelines. This is a conceptual map for when they applied for the P U D. And when they do that, you just have a concept of what you wanted to do. The concept is basically some buildings with high ceilings with dormers.
So to be held to date to a design standard that the original builders were not held to seems a bit unfair. To be held to a design standard formulated when solar was not cost-effective, or a key player in diminishing global warming, seems irresponsible. The two specific non-compliant design features mentioned by staff are, number six, large cedar fascia with semi-transparent stains, and number nine, gabled roof with dormers. If necessary, we can address both of these. A cedar fascia could be added to the solar array. This, however, would only increase the profile of the array and serve to call it out and make it more viewable than its current design. Adding another roof section sloping north from the top of the solar array could create a gabled roof. However, this seems like unnecessary decoration rather than good design. We would also like to point out that at least one of the homes in the Beaver Tree Point P U D has a raid roof, or a shed roof, in addition to gabled roofs and dormers. So we would not be deviating from any norm. The second objection was the underside, the aesthetics of the underside of the solar array. The wiring on the underside of the solar array should not be of concern. Typically, the wires are run along the edges of the purlins that the panels are mounted on and are hidden from view. The wires are exposed on every tilt-up installation of solar panels in Wildridge, and it doesn't appear to have been an issue. We will take every precaution to ensure that the panel installation is done professionally and meets not only your, but our standards of neatness. Of course, we could always build a standard roof above the deck and mount the panels on the roof. This would, however, increase the cost of the project, which is not allowable by state renewable energy laws and aid funds ordinance. There's a picture of those tilt-up solar panels, and those are within 200 feet of our proposed project. The fourth, I'm sorry, the third objection, defining the solar array as ground-mounted and finding that solar collection has not been maximized on the primary structure is a misleading statement. The solar panels are not freestanding above the ground with nothing underneath them. The deck and the storage area are attached to the house. Even if they're not attached to the house, the storage area would be an outbuilding, and the solar array would be attached to the outbuilding and thus not defined as ground-mounted. Phases one and two, the deck and storage area, will be built before the solar array is mounted. You have an email in the package that we provided today from Christian Bassow of Sunset Solar stating that the proposed solar array is not ground-mounted, and that any concerns from the town of Avon can be readily addressed by his engineering and structural staff. It's a short email, so I'd just like to read it to you. This was directed on Monday, August 20th, to David McWilliams. Hi, David, thanks for forwarding this email.
I'm going to stop you right there. We do have this email before us, and since this is a long agenda tonight, I'd like to wrap up the presentation and we can go ahead and ask applicant questions. We do have that email in front of us, so just wanted to make sure.
Okay, that's fine, just so that everybody reads it.
Yeah, absolutely. We have it in front of us this during this presentation.
Okay. Regarding maximization of solar collection on the primary structure, your packet contains two letters from solar companies verifying that our roof is not suitable for mounting solar panels, and there is not enough room to mount the number of panels that we need to install. As a result of fire department building codes that require three feet of free roof area around the solar panels over livable spaces, and because of the numerous dormers and the many trees planted adjacent to our existing house, there is not enough non-shaded available space that can collecting up with the sun's light for our energy needs. Furthermore, the roof is a seventeen-year-old shaped roof that makes it very difficult to install solar panels without having leaks. In a letter submitted with our original proposal and included in your packet, Christian Bassow writes, and he talks about the same things that I just mentioned, the shaped roof, the shaded areas, the new fire department's, and then he concludes, and I quote, "The design of a twenty-one-panel solar array at the southern end of his house," Mr. Remler, "is the best location given the circumstances." Unfortunately, staff did not include the letter that we provided them, that we requested from the Avon Fire Department. This letter states that panels installed over non-livable spaces are exempt from new fire codes and thus can be installed over, and the panels therefore can be installed over the proposed deck as our plans show. So we have the fire department approval. The fourth objection, and the last objection, the town of Avon's lawyer believes that the state laws protecting against, quote, "unreasonable restrictions on renewable energy generation devices", unquote, only apply to private covenants and restrictions and do not affect local government land use authority. It would appear, however, that the town of Avon is acting in the capacity of design reviewer for the subdivision of Wildridge. The restatement of and third amendment to protective covenant of Wildridge subdivision in the town of Avon, Eagle County, Colorado, recorded on September 14th, 1982, and enforced until 2029, specifically defines the town of Avon as the design review board for the HOA, making it a member of the HOA and the enforcer of the above document. We have a copy of the first page of that document in the packet that we provided for you today, and we can provide the entire document as well. Essentially, the town of Avon and the Planning and Zoning Committee are operating as key members of the Wildridge HOA, a private organization with its own covenants and restrictions. Therefore, the town of Avon is subject to state laws protecting the development of renewable energy. Furthermore, the intent of the law is clear. As global warming has revealed devastating consequences to the economy in many forms, including fires and lack of snow, which is surely a main driver of the economy locally, it is clear that federal, state, and local legislatures want to encourage alternative energy systems and have created legislation that greatly inhibits any entity from inhibiting its installation. Also in your packet, you have-
That we provided.
That we provided. You have a letter from Heather Lemon, who is an attorney and a local real estate agent, and it is her opinion that the town of Avon is, should be held accountable to the state laws and to its own renewable energy ordinancees. So please take a look at Heather's letter. On a local level, Avon's town attorney has reiterated that Avon also has its own general standard, which states that, quote, "Any person or association, regardless of the date of establishment, is prohibited from imposing private covenants, conditions, restrictions, deed clauses, or other agreements between parties that prevent persons from installing and using alternative energy systems", unquote. It does not say that Avon or the Planning and Zoning Committee is exempt from complying with this standard or can ignore Avon's goals of encouraging solar, decreasing greenhouse gases, addressing global warming, and becoming a green and more sustainable city. Okay, I would like also to re, when we first started this project, trying to get this project approved-
In March.
Back in March.
Five months ago.
Yeah. We reviewed the state, state and local codes with David McWilliams, and he agreed at that point in time that neither the town nor our HOA could really stop the solar installation for aesthetic reasons. And he said specifically in an email dated April 20th, 2018, "Good afternoon, Tom. We ask for an approval letter from the HOA, not on aesthetic grounds, which you rightly point out is not allowed, but to avoid timing slash maintenance issues. For example, suppose a homeowner was unaware of the HOA wanting a new roof on a shared property and built some panels without first asking. A simple email will do, along with the supporting site drawings, planning documents, and a seventy-five-dollar development application fee." And here's the key, again, the town is not judging this on aesthetic grounds. We are merely checking that the regulations in place for solar panels are being met." And this email was directed to Tom Remler and William Bray, and it was from David McWilliams. We had been over backwards to work with the Planning and Zoning Committee's staff on this project, but we had met resistance the entire way. We hope that this committee will abide by the state law and not disregard the stated town policies on renewable energy. Approving our proposal will result in a very attractive solar system mounted over a very useful deck that can barely be seen from the street. The solar system will power our electric car and satisfy most of the electric needs for our house. In conclusion, we've taken the liberty of suggesting some additional findings to supplement those staff provided. We have a copy of those in your packet that we provided today. Items 11 through 14 primarily reference phases one and two of the project, and items 12 through 23 come into play if the solar array or phase three of the project is approved. We feel that these statements were more clearly defining the project and the basis for your decision, and we ask that you take them under consideration. Thank you.
Before we get into questions for the applicant, I know I have a question for staff, and we have a few questions for our town lawyer. So if he can speak up here if he's listening to us at all, Eric. Okay. My question for staff is the solar panels that were mentioned across the street from their property, are those in compliance?
Recurrent power code.
So I think the pictures that were displayed were from Saddle Ridge Roof, there's a collaborative palace, and I can't confirm this, but I believe those were installed before the 2010 Natural Resource Protection Standards, which I think are referenced in David's notes. So I think those were put in place before the town code requirements.
They were installed last year. It's been six months.
No, they weren't. I live right around the corner, those panels have been there for many years.
I'm pretty sure we used those as illustrative examples that helped define that six-foot above a flat roof standard that got to the Natural Resource Protection Section. So, yeah, I agree with your recollection that, that those were. Does that talk to the microphone very well?
No, that was mine.
So Eric, question for you. Can you provide comments on, on two things? One, the town's role as DRB in relation to the HOA, and how that impacts our ability to enact regulations?
Sure.
And then, second, also the town's ability to control or to impact designs of solar that could also impact costs. And to advocate the letter comments entered from the applicant.
So with regard to the Wildridge subdivision, in my experience in ten years, and I have not seen previously the town of Avon ever act in any capacity as a design review board or act in any capacity to enforce Wildridge covenants. I've read them, as issues come up in Wildridge, I've probably read them half a dozen times over the years. They say that the town can act as the design review board, and if it doesn't, then the homeowners of Wildridge can have their own design review or do their, enforce their own covenants on their own. So, yes, back in 1982, there was language that said the town of Avon could act in that capacity. I, I don't know if it ever did, but it has not in the last decade or more acted as design review. In the opinion I provided, citing, referencing the state statute, which is very clear, and there's case law that says private covenants cannot be used to restrict solar devices. So that's clear, and there's one case under that statute, and it's pretty well acknowledged amongst real estate attorneys that that is, means what it says, and that private HOA covenants and declarations, restrictions cannot be used to restrict solar devices. That does not apply to municipalities. That's a opinion I have that most municipal, municipal attorneys share. Our authority is police power authority, it's not real estate contractual authority. When you talk about the design review and the covenants and the 1982 Wildridge P U D guide, that's all on the private side, creating declarations that run with the property. Our zoning power comes from our police power authorities, it's in Title VII of our Development Code, and that's really what is binding on the town, it's the criteria. Some device I'm going to give you tonight is you need to stick to the criteria in your code and not concern yourself or consider the private covenants that are on this property. That said, and I think myself and planning staff and maybe some others have a little bit different views of the structures being proposed and how that fits with our code. The code does give a right to put on solar devices if you're mounting on an existing roof, and it's not more than two feet, and if you're mounting on the ground, and it's not more than ten feet, and if you're mounting on a flat roof. I viewed what they were building, looking at the plans, as a flat roof because there's a deck and there's a structure below it, so somewhere between that structure below it and that deck, there is a roof that, if it's enclosed. And so I interpreted it that way. But that's, you know, this is a little bit unusual in how that fits in. So if, if they, if you were to approve something that had a flat roof, I would say they have a right to build something that's as high as six feet above it. They also, and that does not take away from your authority, in my opinion, to review new roofs. If they want to propose a solar panel as a roof, I think that's something you haven't seen before, that's something you can consider, but that doesn't, the fact that it's a solar panel or shingles or metal or whatever doesn't change your ability to review that roof form under the design- under the design section of your code. I think that covers everything I wanted to offer tonight.
And then one other question, and some of the public comment that was provided, it seems like there's a potential lawsuit between the HOA and the property owner. In your opinion, does any decision that is made tonight by this planning and zoning commission have any impact on that?
So our duty as a local government in reviewing development applications is wholly independent from enforcement or legal pursuits with regard to private declarations. I saw in that letter there was a request to table the matter until there was an outcome. I would definitely counsel against that. We have an obligation to process applications in accordance with the timeframes that are in our code and in accordance with the review criteria we have in our Development Code. Last thing I was going to add is that the applicant did point out some provisions in the code that do allow some flexibility, and I do think that's, that does allow you some flexibility in doing this, so that's your discretion.
Thank you.
Peter, do you have a question for staff?
They brought up a note, the topic of notice, and said this should have been on a prior agenda. Can you speak to that, or?
Sure.
Who's to trust that? The application wasn't deemed complete because we didn't have all the materials.
The materials that he didn't have, the plans he didn't have, was the square footage of the lot. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
And we went over that at the other meeting, that the matter, I mean, it's his figures or my figures, that square footage, that it didn't matter because it was both under. So we covered it and settled that issue at the last meeting. But also, I supplied that information three times before the deadline to apply for the, to notice and to paper to publish. And he didn't publish. And I was a little bit upset about that. It started in March, so we could get this project in this year, and we keep running out of time. And so I can show you the emails where I supplied that information, the architect that supplied that information, and it was on the lot coverage, and Jared made the comment back then that that, it didn't matter getting the exact percentage of lot coverage because both our covenants were under.
Do you have any questions for the applicant on the presentation?
I have one other question first. So one of the last points that was brought up from the Homeowner Association President was that the addition is going to be built on an easement. Has that been cleared up? Is that a question?
There are no documented easements on the platter of PUD, so any easement is more of a maintenance covenant-level issue.
But within the building envelope, there is no easement.
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant or the, or staff? This is a public hearing, so I am going to open this up to the public if anyone would like to get up in speed.
Before some ladies up in speed, can I address one of the points that-
Absolutely, go ahead. Let's just try to be as consistent as possible.
We could easily put up a roof under your solar panels, okay? But that starts limiting your options. The new technology out there is that a solar panel, solar cells basically are drawn, are hexagon, and they're not stacked together, so there's space in between all these circles. And light goes through those spaces, can go through those spaces with a different type of panel. And those panels are used as a roof, and you use them like for greenhouse additions to a home. So you get the light from them. And so those panels are about 15% more efficient with no more cost because they're using the same cell for both sides, okay? And that's why it wasn't put under. And as you mentioned, the panels are more efficient without the roof underneath. Now I can eat, if this planning commission thinks that this is a ground mounted, mounted over a deck, I'll put a roof on it. And I'll, I'll put a roof of materials such as asphalt shingles on there. You won't see it because it's covered. And then I'll put the solar on it, and it's totally complex, and I'm not extending over, and I can extend that roof legally eight, 10 feet over the other because it's a roof. It's not a solar panel. So I'm hoping you use some logic here, but what we tried to do with this design is we eliminated those panels that extended over because of suggestions of this, this committee, but then that increases our performance by 40%. And so, okay, to build four feet towards the road, which isn't approaching any of our neighbors, it's in a yard. And that mountain goes the four feet, most of it is over, it was way up there, some little bits of the building was reported. So I hope that clarifies that ground mountain and all these slopes.
Thank you very much, we'll see you tomorrow. Thank you, Mary. Bill?
Well, I would agree with staff and my two fellow commissioners. However, if you look at the solar panel acting as a roof, it seems to make sense in order to make the applicant agree. I question how we approve for something when the Homeowner Association disagrees, so I'm not sure, Eric, the kind of legal arguments we create, whether we should even think about it.
I think you should not think about it. It's, they're totally separate, and we can approve something that is not allowed under private coven or is just being under private coven, they're both independent.
That being said, I will strike that, that information that I've received and the letters that I've received. And if I look at the application on face value, it looks like the solar panel meets the requirements. I'm concerned about the setbacks and how close it is to the line, so there would be the need to stake it out prior to construction. And I had a question on the trees. If the trees are hiding the panels, don't those same trees block the sun for the panels?
Thank you, Bill. I'm going to go ahead and make my comment here. As I review our review criteria for the minor development planning and design review, I agree with Bill that this does act as a roof form.